Council is in the room. We will commence the February 17th, the West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and the West Sacramento Financing Authority Meeting. We met in closed session to discuss the conference with Labor Negotiator, and there is no action to report. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Girl Scout Troop Number 2204. And Troop Leader Danielle Rose, please lead your troop to the, lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. We will have live public comment, and we will continue to receive written comments. And all comments received by 4:30 will be provided to City Council and posted on the website. To provide a live comment during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom link, hyperlink to the phone number listed on the city's website on the City Council's agenda. I will request public comment during Item 1A prior to the first item on consent and after the staff presentation for any other item on the agenda. Once I have announced the public comment period, if you would like to make a comment, please do one of the following. One, if you're joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button. Or two, if you're joining the meeting by phone, press the star nine. When it is your turn to comment, the clerk will call you by name or phone number and will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes. The clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. And once your three minutes or your public comment has ended, you will be muted again. You may also join by phone at 1696-1669-900-9128, ID number 92095642935, passcode is 004264. Next item on the agenda is Item 1A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda. And council members are prohibited from discussion on any matter presented under this item. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or live public comment request?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. Mayor Guerrero, we did not receive any written comment for 1A, but we do have raised hands. Do you want me to start calling on them?
Yes, please. Thank you.
We'll call on Mr. Jeremiah Horner.
Hello, I can be heard?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll begin. I'm going to read since three minutes is tough for me to stay within. I'm here today, many of us neighbors are here, to talk about the currently proposed merger that is happening to allow a large warehouse. And we're here to talk about PD-21 overall. I believe the city's received many correspondence from us. One major issue we're having is several standards in PD-21 intended to protect the residents are not currently being met. PD-21 noise standards are not being met. We hear a lot of beeping, a lot of crashing. We do hear a lot of vibrations, loud HVAC and engines at all hours, all within violation of PD-21, which is intended to protect residents. And nothing has been done about it. We have reported it to code enforcement, and that has not been addressed either. It's a huge impact on the neighborhood because we are, neighbors are losing sleep. Some rooms are unusable. Some people are trying to sleep with earplugs. We also want to raise the concern regarding the landscape buffers that are meant to serve as protective barrier between neighbors and residents and the business parks that exist. We've noted several violations that I want to bring to the city's attention. Screening trees have not been provided on Ramco Street for Lot 24. There's no room to plant them. And that's our one entitled road of trees that are meant to protect us. And instead, we got the warehouse built way too close to our homes. Lot 5 and 6 and 7 is where the merger is proposed. And the sidewalk that's supposed to be there is absent. The screening trees are inadequate, and they're spaced way too far apart. And in Patwin Park, we also get sound that comes right through to us because there's no sound wall and there's no screening landscape at all. And that is one part of the problem in addition to the fact that the businesses are just being too loud and not meeting noise standards. I want to let the city know, then council members, thanks for being here, and mayor as well. Building and operating like this is not sustainable. PD-21 is supposed to protect residents, and when the protections are absent, it doesn't work. These warehouses have proven to be a known nuisance, and they violate the PD-1 restrictions by noise. And the landscaping is not, is, when it's absent, we're in trouble. It's not okay to keep developing warehouses in the midst of PD-21 violations while we experience these disturbances. We really believe that SEQA should be opening with new developments. Neighbors want comfortable enjoyment, and we are willing to fight for it. We just want you to know that, that we are very concerned. There is no reason why the city should approve a merger. The merger sits on different zone types, which deletes a protection that we have and introduces an industrial zone into a business park zone, and that should not be enabled as well. So, given the findings we've had with the noise as well as the constructive landscaping that is absent, we think that an environmental review is called for, and that new developments and mergers should not be allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Horner. Next is Mr. Graham. Go ahead.
I thank you. I just want to thank Mr. Horner for speaking so eloquently and quickly. I live in Southport. I live on Catalina Island Road. And the business park is line of sight for me. It's right across the street. We're documenting beeping at 3 o'clock in the morning. There's engine rumbles. There's like industrial rumble that's causing our, our frames to literally vibrate on the wall where we have to adjust our picture frames so they don't make a vibrating sound. We have a nine-year-old, and she, you know, her room is in the front part of our house, but it's line of sight straight to the truck ports. And at 3 o'clock in the morning, she's, she's woken up at least once a week. You know, all hours of the night, there's, it's more than just trucks. It's crashing and loading, and you know, there's, there's a lot going on right there, right there. And there's no protection. It's all, it's all right there. There's no, there's no trees. There's no, and there's a, a small wall, but it's only half-built. And, you know, we, we can, we can see the trucks floating. You can imagine during COVID that not being able to use the front part of our house is even more stifling. It's, it's difficult because we're actually considering moving my daughter to the back part of the house where it's a little more quiet. I'm strongly opposed to the merger of parcels 5, 6, and 7 on Ramco. PD-21 is an ordinance that gives developers rights they have to build. And it also provides protections for residents. That's how we are good neighbors. However, these protections are not being implemented and enforced. And all development must stop until they are. This is, this is fair. We've been told that the city can't change the rules. We're holding you to that. You can't change rules by combining these lots. That's not what we signed up for when we purchased our, our properties, when we purchased our homes. We have an expectation of what's going to be around us in our neighborhood. And we're, we're going to take whatever actions we, we possibly can. And we're looking to, you know, whether it's requesting SEQA review, whatever, whatever we're willing for, we need to make sure that, you know, we're playing by the rules. Again, it's not our desire to have special treatment. We want the same treatment, equal treatment, as businesses, with the protection of PD-21.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Next is Mr. Forrest. Go ahead.
Hi there. Thank you so much. My name is Forrest Gardens, and I am a neighborhood advocate for mobile homes. And I also work on Opelot with the homeless here in the town. When I saw Resolution 2110, my heart just melted because this city is just the epicenter for compassion. This city is the, is the embodiment of, of compassion in every way, shape, and form. The, the things that, that went on when we had the eviction crisis, when 120 to 130 folks were faced with, with homelessness themselves. There were 60 homes that were served eviction notices that only had 20, excuse me, that only had 60 days to get out. If it wasn't for the compassion for not only the landlord, the city, the state using, with HCD, the volunteers that converged here, the community itself, the organizations that came from all walks of life, not only from, from us here in West Sacramento, but as far as the Bay Area. I mean, we have folks from San Francisco that were coming in. They all recognized that we were here for each other. And without any, without any judgment or equivocation, they all came in and just walked from door to door with, with saws and hammers and planks of wood and, and sheets of metal to fix the issue. And that was to help be there for each other. In this resolution, it is, again, the embodiment of what we West Sacramentoans are with one another. I mean, you couldn't have had a more picturesque city of each other, helping each other, and creating this feedback loop of positive energy that even continues today. You know, I, I can't thank you enough for bringing this resolution to the, to the floor. And if it wasn't for, for folks at all levels of, of the city, we wouldn't have been able to, to pull this off and to save these, these, these 130 folks from facing homelessness. Thank you so much for putting this resolution together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wendy. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Wendy Motoka, resident of the Brideway Island Neighborhood, which is on the southern boundary of the PD-21. I'm, I'm here to speak about that same subject that the prior speakers have, have raised. I met you about a year and a half ago when residents discovered that the planning department was allowing developers to ignore the landscape screening requirements that had been placed in the PD-21 ordinance for the benefit of the residential zones. Landscape screening is required by the mitigated negative declaration produced following the SEQA review for the PD-21 project in the 1990s. We resolved the situation through a compromise agreement and believe that the planning department would be more attentive in the future. Yet we are now seeing the same violations occurring again on the southeast boundary of the PD-21. The required mitigation measures for this area, Parcels 24, 25, and Ramco Street adjacent to Parcels 4, 5, and 6 are being ignored. The streetscape for Ramco Street was not installed in compliance with Figure 10 of the PD-21 ordinance. The tree screen required for Parcel 24 was not installed. The industrial noise levels in the area already exceed the PD-21 noise performance standards. And now the city zoning administrator is proposing to merge three parcels, 5, 6, and 7, two-zone BP, one-zone M1, to enable the construction of a supersized distribution center with double truck rows of truck docks, double rows of truck docks that would be unshielded from the adjacent homes. This merger would eliminate yet another required mitigation measure imposed by the SEQA mitigated negative declaration. The BP-zoned lots at the edge of the PD-21 were placed there to serve as a buffer specifically, and I quote, "to mitigate future noise impacts." The merger of the BP and M1 lots to create a giant trucking facility is not consistent with the required mitigation measures. It is a deletion of a SEQA mitigation measure. So to summarize, the planning department has been ignoring the PD-21's required development standards, always to the detriment of the residential properties. Landscape screening is missing. Noise performance standards are not being enforced. And now the planning department wants to violate the residential property owners' rights even more by merging lots so that a giant noisy trucking facility can be built where it should not be built. We do not believe that the decision to merge these lots would be lawful.
Thank you, Ms. Wendy. Ms. Maria, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Maria Gohalva. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I wanted to bring to your attention a article that I came across on, that is factual, on Yolo County Republicans.org, titled "Two West Sacramento Council Members Costing the City of West Sacramento Over $1,000 Because They're Forcing City, the City Into a Special Election." And so I am rather Pollyanna-ish, and I would want to ask the council members, Orozco and Ledesma, to consider the appointment process again, even though it may not be possible, but I think everything is possible, and to consider the appointment process still and save us a lot of money. And that way, all the other candidates, for example, Ryan Harrison, also the opportunity to be considered as a candidate. And so I don't ever want to give up that hope that we can have an open process instead of having to have a special election. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Phone number 607-6664. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Can I be heard?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Laura Stanward. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here also to speak in regards to the parcel merger. My family and I have been residents of the Brideway Island area for about 11 years now, and it's been a wonderful place to live until the last couple of years when we've had these new giant warehouses popping up within a literal stone distance thrown from my home. My husband and I both work from home, and, and which allows us to stay without, you know, with absolute certainty that these disturbances and noise levels that we are experiencing from these warehouses is a 24/7 nuisance that we really receive no break from. We cannot enjoy time in our backyard. We cannot sleep through the night uninterrupted. And we certainly cannot relax or work in our home with our windows open, even on the, you know, nicest, most beautiful days in West Sacramento. The noise is just too disruptive. In addition, the back of our home runs along Southport Parkway. And as a result, we also incur noise disruptions from the countless diesel trucks that although they're not supposed to, drive down Southport Boulevard to turn onto Marshall Road and drive through the residential area where we all live. In fact, just yesterday, as I was on my daily walk at lunchtime, I actually witnessed a regular West Sacramento resident driving in his truck, stopped his truck in the intersection of Southport and Marshall to prevent a diesel truck that was trying to turn down Marshall Road to, you know, confront him and tell him that he's not supposed to be driving through this residential area. And unfortunately, that's what this is coming to without support of the city to rectify the situation. We now have average citizens taking things into their own hands in an effort to find reprieve because we're just not getting the support from the places that it should be coming from. And all of this may sound like not much to anyone who doesn't live it day in and out, but just try to imagine having to live with your smoke detector in your house, running with a low battery beep all day, every day, with no option to escape it. That is what it's like living with a warehouse in your backyard that has numerous truck bays with trucks backing into these bays constantly, all day, every day, even while you try to sleep. This is our reality in this neighborhood. Really, we have no option to escape this constant beeping other than to reach out and plead to you, the city. We're pleading with you to hear our concerns tonight. We are already dealing with huge levels of noise disruption, traffic, and pollution issues from the currently existing warehouses. And for this reason, we now say that we very strongly and emphatically oppose the merging of zones to build a mega warehouse, which will only significantly magnify all of these issues that you're hearing about from these citizens in this community tonight. In addition, this new proposed merged parcel will sit within a stone's throw distance from Brideway Island Elementary School. And I can only imagine the noise and traffic disruptions that this will cause for the young students and parents who are a part of that school on a daily basis. We want you to know that this isn't just a protest of passion that we're embarking on tonight. We all believe that the city has made shortcuts and cut corners on residential protection, and we will not sit idly by and watch as more damage is brought upon our livelihoods and our property values. Thank you for hearing my concerns tonight.
Next is Matt and Yessenya.
Good evening, everyone. We live directly behind these warehouses. We, we oppose them completely. It is, what I can only compare is living with a newborn for the last year. If you, any of you have children, imagine your newborn waking up every hour, every hour at the same time, but instead of crying, it's beeping. I kid you not. If it's not beeping, it's heavy lifting and then dropping of the semi packages, of the trailers. Our house, I don't know if anyone else is experiencing, this is actually moving. We're shifting because of all the movement from this warehouse. The first warehouse, we had movement. Now we're having more movement. Our house is actually moving, separating from the cement. We had a foundation guy come not too long ago. And any more movement, and we're going to have to look at about $10,000 of repairs due to the movement. That's just the house. Let's talk about the ducks. We live behind a wildlife preserve. We live at 3730 Solomon Island Road. I invite you to come. We will walk the pond. The garbage that is coming in, in this pond is atrocious. There's so much garbage. I mean, I, I can't believe it. The noises on top of the pollution, the constant construction going on, and the warehouse, excuse me, the, all of the trucks coming in and out at all hours of the night. I really hope this doesn't happen. Please, we are reaching out to you guys to make the right decision. We've got kids at home doing online school. We can't open our windows. The beeping is coming across on our Zoom classes. And I'm going to let my husband talk.
Hi, my name is Matt Kristoff. Yeah, as my wife said, the, the noise is pretty unbearable. And it, the sleep disruption for myself and my eight-year-old son has been extremely concerning. It's just something that we're, you know, we can't get used to. And I don't think it's right for the city to expect us to get used to it. And literally, we will go through any means necessary to put a stop to it. And, you know, we didn't start out as, as activists. We just want to come home and enjoy our peaceful little home here in West Sacramento. But that's been taken away from us. So that's, that's all I really want to say. And we're opposed to the, the giant parcel that's going to be built. And we hope that you guys can stop it.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is...
Hi, my name is Callum. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I live directly behind this new building that, you know, the letter sent out for the PD-21. It's really loud behind us already, and with a bigger warehouse, more trucking. I mean, most of this company, I believe they probably run like a 24-hour shift. So we constantly hear beeping. Just the other night on February 15, there was stuff going on in West Sacramento. I called the police line because there was a truck sitting maybe 500 feet away from our house trying to take a nap because, you know, semi trucks, they go to sleep. They keep their semi running to have, you know, heater on and stuff like that. I get track. So it was just loud, hearing their engine running, you know. I mean, my wife hears phone ringing from the, from the warehouses. And sometimes they're hammering and stuff like that. And it's just, it's really hard to sleep at night at certain times, you know. And, you know, currently it's winter, so we got the window closed. But once someone comes around and, you know, really we can't open our window. And the only choice is either having fan on or AC, and that's going to drive our costs more to, you know, pay for our bills and stuff like that. So I just want to, you know, mention that stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Walden.
James Walden? We can't hear you. You're muted. Mr. Walden? Oh, okay.
Mayor Guerrero, I think that's all we have for public comments.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Thank you, everybody who came in to speak today. And we will have staff on regarding the Ramco decision. Have staff follow up with you about that item. And next is our council communications, Item 1B, from our assignments that are listed on the council communications. Are there any updates from any of our council members? Councilmember Orozco? You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Guerrero. On February 10, 2021, I met with the Sacramento County Sanitation District and Regional County Sanitation District. And as a board of directors, we authorized the issuance of a Series 2021 bonds to refund the Series 2007B bonds and terminate the series of 2007B swap and potentially refund Series 2014A bonds. We also received a presentation on the update of the Echo Water Project Quarterly Report for October 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. In addition, I also met with the Yolo County Housing Authority. We received a variety of presentations, one of which was a COVID-19 project room key update. As many know, the county has a variety of different programs. In Davis, and in Woodland, and in West Sacramento, we have one of the largest projects here currently operating out of the roadway inn. And we discussed long-term solutions, including the Mercy Housing's Permanent Supportive Housing Project, which is expected to be completed in September of this year, as well as a continuation of the roadway inn as acquired by the city as part of the Home Key Program. In recent meetings, there was a discussion about how the county could look to other sustainable funding mechanisms for the, for, say, housing or projects just like this if it weren't for federal or state funding. And I had recommended that our own city manager, who happens to be an expert in the tax agreement financing and EIFD, that maybe he could give a presentation to our body. So he did, actually, and he made time to present before the body, giving a full presentation to the board and perhaps giving them another opportunity to consider that as a financing mechanism to meet our goals. Finally, there was a presentation by Nolan Sullivan with Yolo County Health and Human Services regarding CalWorks Housing Support Program. And he covered what the program entails, which is essentially that housing support program provides Calwork homeless families with assistance for rent bills and credit repair, home needs, and other assistance to help stabilize families. And in the city of West Sacramento, we currently have 12 units master leased with Yolo County Housing, as well as other, six other master leases in, in the West Sacramento motel. So it was a really informative meeting, and it was fantastic to have a couple of new members. Gloria Perdita over in Davis, who was sworn in, as well as myself. So pleased to bring that presentation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On last, a week ago, Monday, February 8, the meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District. A few things on that agenda. One was a couple more appointments to the YCTV Citizens Advisory Committee, which is now starting to grow, which is good, to provide more representation of board actions and Yolo Bus Service. There was also a resolution authorizing grant applications. I want to thank city staff who did provide a letter of support for some of the grant applications out to, I think it was, I believe it was Secog through Secog. So I want to thank staff for that, our city staff for supporting YCTV grant applications. In addition, we had a financial status update, pretty much status quo as COVID continues to impact fixed as COVID continues to, um, impact, uh, fixed route, uh, bus routes. Um, we also, uh, approved, um, a reduced amount for the city of Woodland, uh, as they proposed to use, uh, federal transit administration funds for an improvement project in Woodland. Um, uh, we, uh, they had originally proposed the use of, uh, roughly five hundred and sixty thousand. And we ended up approving three hundred and seventy-eight thousand for that project. Um, and, uh, finally, an, an update on the co- uh, comprehensive operational analysis assessment. And I just wanna, uh, uh, I think, uh, it was committed by YCTD, um, that there would be, um, a presentation to our Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission uh, as an update to them as well. So I would ask staff to kinda make sure, I think that that commitment is made by YCTD staff. I think they're an important body to make sure there's feedback on that plan. Uh, this, the board overwhelmingly wanted to make sure that, uh, as much feedback got in as possible. And we bring that study, which has been open for over a year, uh, bring it to a close. Uh, so again, those are the main things that were on our agenda for last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. And, uh, for, um, my update, it's, uh, Secog Transportation Committee convened on February fourth. We approved the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program, amendment number one to the twenty twenty Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Strategy and the Air Quality Conformity Analysis. Staff completed the draft of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Plan, an associated amendment to the twenty twenty Metropolitan Plan Sustainable Community Strategies, and the draft air quality conformity analysis. We also re-approved receipt of the unmet transit need finding for the Sacramento Regional Transit District, Sac- Sacramento Sutter, Yolo and Yuba Counties and the cities, um, therein in the State Transportation Development Act, which requires the Secog make an annual unmet transit needs findings for the Sacramento Regional Transit District. And in, um, West Sacramento, one of the, um, notations that were made was access to the, um, Social Security Administration looking for a bus stop, um, to get to that area. And maybe what we can do is increase awareness of VIA and the resource to be able to access on that on-demand right share, um, to the Social Security Administration. Um, we supported for Caltrans statewide safety net, uh, safety performance management targets. Federal law requires states and metropolitan planning organizations to establish annual targets as part of the series of performance measures. We also review the Downtown Transit System Integration Study. It's a competitive transit and intercity rail grant program. Awarded funding in twenty twenty to a regional partnership that included Secog and board action, um, uh, approved to move forward with the grant implementation activities that involve Secog. And we also re- review the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um, Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grants, um, which staff identified planning grant concepts for the California Department of Transportation fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, and applications, um, were due February twelfth, so the, um, that's what we, uh, reviewed. In addition, we received a workshop on Secog's role in fair housing issues. Um, eye-opening to see, um, the land use politi- policies here in West Sacramento affecting, um, residential segregation, racial inequity, and, and, um, seeing how, uh, minority communities were not able to get home loans, um, because of the past policies that, uh, now have been changed. But Secog's gonna be keeping a closer eye. Um, and in their new role of fair housing issues and how, um, they will be adopting Regional Housing Needs Plan, uh, which seeks to affirm really further fair housing. Um, in addition, the Sacramento Valley Division, um, met, uh, on February eighth, I think it was. And, um, we discussed a meeting that we will be having, a Zoom meeting, and you're welcome to participate this Friday. Um, West Sacramento is going to be hosting, um, the bi-monthly meeting, um, which will take place, uh, via Zoom. And, uh, we will be hosting it, um, because I would like for, um, our region to, uh, review the Broadband Services Bill, Assembly Bill fourteen, um, so we can take a look at options to enhance broadband access, which will be, um, presented by Assembly Member Aguirre Curry. And, um, we will also be presenting, um, the successes of, uh, Project Home Key and speaking with other members, as, um, Councilmember Roscoe identified that we are, um, one of the largest in the region who's been successful with Project Home Key. And we will also receive a budget presentation, um, by the California Budget and Policy Center on the status of the budget. Um, there'll be, uh, an early budget adopted, uh, which I think we will be able to benefit from. There is additional Project Home Key funding that is proposed in the governor's budget. So we will see what opportunities, um, our region can benefit from in, um, drawing down uh, local funding for, for, for example, the small business loans is, um, one of the, uh, budget proposals which the legislature plans to approve this, um, Thursday and then on Monday in the assembly. And so next week it'll be done. So that presentation is timely for us to be aware of opportunities that West Sacramento can benefit from. I'll be forwarding, um, the registration link to our clerk, who can send it out to council members if they'd like to participate. And that concludes, um, I think if nobody, Councilmember, I'll call it. Go ahead.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to, um, interject that tomorrow I will be attending the RD nine hundred meeting. And I would very much, um, like to attend the February Sac- Sac Valley, uh, Division meeting that you are hosting.
Okay.
And, and I'm just going to ask that, um, if I could, I, I don't believe I'm on some of the, um, the emails from the committees that, uh, I've been appointed to, because I haven't received, um, any meeting updates for some of the committees that I have here. So, um,
Okay.
Respectfully request that, um, someone look into that.
We would both, um, uh, the city manager and I can take a look at it. I'll, I'll take a look at it from, um, our contact, Charles A- uh, Anderson, who is our liaison with the League of Cities. And he, uh, should have plugged you in. And then I think city manager can help you touch base with the, um, with the administrative side.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And really quickly, tomorrow, um, I will be at the two-by-two city and WSD meeting. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Councilmember Alco. Yes, we, uh, thank you for the reminder that we'll have the two-by-two tomorrow. Okay, next we will take on the consent agenda. Are there any, uh, requests to remove any items from the consent of Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item six, please.
Six. Okay. No other items, um, to be removed? Okay, I would like item number two to be removed. Uh, I have one quick question. And then item number three as well, just a couple of questions on those two items. So we will start from the numerical order. Item number two. And I have a question for staff, um, regarding what is being proposed. I just wanna make sure that, um, the right-of-way to be abandoned by the city. Um, I just wanna make sure that there is going to be access for those, um, with a disability to, um, navigate themselves in that area. And I don't know if anybody's able to answer the question at this point. Amanda?
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, Aaron. Sorry, my, my video feed is not working tonight. I believe, um, staff person on that item is, um, Mark Collier from Community Development.
Okay, is Mark in?
It looks like he may have, uh, be having trouble with his audio. So, um, let's see, um.
You can, you can.
Marky.
You can give me the update later, and, uh, we'll go on to item number.
I saw John Robinson came off you. He may know, uh, the answer to that question, so.
I was, I was just gonna say generically that, you know, the, the right-of-way would be provided as part of the project. So there's really not a right of, uh, excuse me, the handicap accessible access would be provided as part of the project. So the right-of-way consideration doesn't really have a a bearing on the accessibility of the project. It just facilitates the construction of the structures.
I see.
And it all did, um, anytime there's new construction, it has to be built. The off-site improvements have to be built to city standards. So if there isn't, um, ADA accessibility on that space right now, um, then there's a project that goes in, those improvements will be constructed as part of it. Hopefully that helps.
Okay, yes, it does. Thank you so much. And then on item number three, I was interested in knowing who the developer for, is for this item. It is, uh, the Newport Estates, and I was just curious to know if, um, somebody can give me the name of the developer.
We were looking for her to answer that. So he's, since he's having audio issues, we need to get back to you on that.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll definitely follow you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Audio.
Okay, Councilmember Roscoe, you have item number six.
I do. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I'm, I'm pleased to introduce item six and, um, have some brief comments before. I understand we have a few, um, folks who would like to speak, uh, on behalf of this item. It's been said that compassion is the glue that holds every community of any size together. And it's the capacity of neighbors to, uh, to look out for each other, to care about the least fortunate, and to give every citizen the opportunity to contribute in a significant and meaningful way for the health of our community. Uh, the purpose of the compassionate West Sacramento resolution is to recognize, celebrate, and promote compassionate action, which, you know, quite frankly, as you just heard from Forest Gardens, is already interwoven within the fabric of our West Sacramento community. In many ways, with or without, uh, this resolution, we are just de facto a community that already operates in such a fashion, which makes this even that much more significant. When people in our region and throughout the nation refer to the wonderful innovations that we've done and championed here in West Sacramento, they're not only talking about the infrastructure and the development, but they're also talking about the, the public policies and the programs that reflect the overarching commitment we have to the people we serve. These are innovations and efforts such as our transit and mobility options, which I know we're gonna be talking about later, VIA, Bike Share Scooter, Safe Path. These are all efforts that helps support and promote access to equity. Uh, with the West SAC Home Run, which provides college savings accounts and internships and scholarships and opportunities for advancements for all West Sacramento students. The Downtown Streets Team, which provides our residents experiencing homelessness with opportunities to help our city while simultaneously, uh, getting resources to help change their lives. We're talking about the project, uh, the, um, uh, permanent supportive housing development we have on West Capitol Avenue and Project Room Key and Home Key that we'll be talking about in celebrating even tomorrow, or excuse me, Friday. When I talk about our community, I, I, I think of, uh, programs such as West SAC Kids Give Back, which hosts a school supply uh, and personal hygiene efforts and, uh, even canned food and, uh, one-of-a-kind yarn raisers to, to collect yarn from our neighbors to, to give to the active aging knit and crochet group who meets at the community center when they could meet. I think about Callings Cares and Shop With The Cop and partnerships between the Yolo Food Bank and Three Sisters Gardens, who gather together to feed our hungry. The Yolo County Children's Alliance To- Toy Coat and Turkey Giveaways, and the Mercy Coalition's Winter Warming Centers, and the nine eleven flags that are always planted by John Vincent and his team of volunteers along Jefferson Boulevard. The Fill The Bag Efforts, uh, that are initiated by local hardworking mothers and our committed homeless coordinator, Mark Sawyer, who consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty to care for the most vulnerable in our city. And finally, neighbors like Peggy Bell and Verna Solpizio and Catherine Turner, who during the recent blackouts delivered food and supplies to those with just put their power out just weeks ago. This, this is us. This is, this is West Sacramento. And I have always hoped to live in a community where residents feel a deep connection with their neighbors and their community at large. And frankly, I do live in that community. West Sacramento is uniquely positioned to be a beacon and a model for others, and it continues to making the vision of a more compassionate culture its reality. I'll take a moment to just say, at a time when we're all recovering from tragedies that have affected our community in the, the recent couple days, uh, we're navigating through a pandemic and the erosion of our shared identity and, and connectivity. And this re- this resolution concern is a framework, um, illustrating our commitment to addressing common problems we face that plague our community. I'm proud of organizations supporting this effort, um, including Compassionate and Resilient West Sacramento, uh, the New Roots Farm, the Cochino Community Garden, BB Can, the Center for Spiritual Awareness, Three Sisters Farm, and Compassionate Capital Region. And if we approve this tonight, we will be joining cities such as Washington DC, Nashville, Minneapolis, Denver, Birmingham, Salt Lake City, Austin, Louisville, Jacksonville, Atlanta, and even more locally, Sacramento, uh, the city of Sacramento and Out Grove, all of whom, and all of which have, uh, adopted compassionate city resolutions. So I would be proud to have West Sacramento join this designation. And with that, I present to my colleagues item six for your consideration and approval. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned you had a speaker?
Yes, um, I believe there should be some hands. Uh, Tanya Beverley is here, and her, uh, photo is on the screen. Ms. Beverley?
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember, I'll call it. Sorry, I'll, I'm gonna have, um, council speak and then I'll have the public, um, weigh-in after. Councilmember, I'll call it. Would you want to wait, or do you want the, a lot of the public to speak first?
No, I will definitely wait. Thank you.
You wait. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, please open it up for those that, um, have been waiting to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call on this Bernadette Austin first.
Yeah, hi folks. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is, uh, Bernadette Austin, and I joined the advisory board for CHIL Sacramento, which is the organization assigned behind the compassionate capital region. And I joined three years ago, following really what I saw, some pretty horrible vitriol around the twenty sixteen election. And I'll be honest, the twenty twenty election was equally disheartening. But at CHIL Sacramento, I really found people like me, like Ms. Beverley, who consider themselves mindful activists, who pursue long-term, meaningful change for peace within us and peace between us. I believe that approval of this somewhat symbolic resolution is really a step in the right direction toward a more compassionate city, where residents, city leadership, and local organizations can connect, share, listen, and further the work of equitable, compassionate communities. Now, we, we all know that the next step will be for folks like city council members to engage in civil dialogue and quickly and unequivocally denounce misinformation and, and the mudslinging that we've seen, and really move forward dedicated to serve all of our residents and stakeholders within our city. I hope our leaders will rise to the occasion, approve this resolution, and then take meaningful action. And I, for one, am really happy to be a part of those efforts. Thank you for bringing this resolution forward.
Next we have Ms. Dante Early.
Hi all. My name is Dr. Dante Early West, um, and I wanted to make a public comment on, on this item, the adoption of a resolution establishing West Sacramento as a compassionate city. For me, this agenda item exemplifies what West Sacramento is about. So much of our civic and community activities are founded in this core value of compassion and kindness. During COVID, we have seen the struggle, increased unemployment, food insecurity, and residents just having a harder time meeting basic needs and paying rent. But what we have also seen is a community that is willing to step up and face these challenges head-on, all to support each other. Whether it has been through Project Home Key, Obama's My Brother's Keeper Initiative, Kids Give Back, Mercy Housing Project, food distribution events, toy distribution events, or simply handing out hot plates during a four-day power outage because you wanna make sure that your neighbor doesn't go hungry. This is what West Sacramento is about. We lead with compassion and kindness. We know that we are stronger together. And so it is only fitting that you adopt this resolution that captures who we are as a city. I am so proud to be a West Sacramento resident, and I thank you all for putting this on the agenda and providing us an opportunity to highlight what makes West Sacramento so amazing and for memorializing our commitment and your commitment to our city continuing to lead with compassion and kindness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ms. Tiffany McAdon.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I first wanna thank Councilmember Roscoe, um, for sponsoring this. Um, and a huge thank you to Tanya Beverley for, um, including me, um, in part of, um, the, the preparation for this. Um, as so many have said and talked about, all of the different, um, organizations and all of the different events, uh, that take place in our city. And even beyond that, we currently have a ma- mother of four who is fighting breast cancer in our community. And there was a link put out on Facebook to help with a meal train for her. And many of us have signed up. If you go look right now, people that know her, people that don't know her, people in our community have signed up all the way through the end of March to provide. to provide meals for this family so that they can focus on the fight against cancer that they have right now, and they can focus on weathering this storm and getting better, and they can focus on each other. And Ruth Pagano and her Fill The Bag campaign, I love Ruth. She is one of the most compassionate people I know. As there were referenced when the storms happened, there were people delivering meals, people opening their homes for those without power to come and shower or get transportation, whatever their needs were. There are things that happen in our schools. There are things that happen every day that those random acts of kindness that you see all the time. You pay for somebody's coffee. You pay for the car behind you in line at the drive-thru. These are the reasons that we need to approve this, because we are a compassionate city. And the last year has been hard. It's been hard for a lot of people. And I think that our city needs this now more than ever. This reminder that we are a community, and even though we can't physically be together right now, we are here to support each other. If you drive down Marshall, there is somebody in our community, and I wish I knew who the person was, who has put up a sign that says, "We will get through this together." They recently replaced it because it was getting weathered. It's been up throughout the whole pandemic. Those are the reasons that we need to adopt this resolution. It is West Sacramento. It is the residents of West Sacramento. And thank you so much to Councilmember Roscoe for sponsoring this. And thank you so much to the other council members and to Mayor Guerrero for putting this on the agenda. And I wholeheartedly hope that this passes tonight. We need this. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Next, we have Ms. Laura Hanson.
Hello, thank you. I'm the co-founder of Compassionate Capital Region with Joan Marie and the team lead for Compassionate Sacramento. West Sacramento is my hometown. I grew up on Firdwood Street near what was then James Marshall High School. I'm proud to be part of the West Sacramento organizing team that has worked for the last two years to bring this resolution to this point under the leadership of Tanya Beverley. I will follow her anywhere. And with this resolution is a vision for how residents can better connect, collaborate, and shape this city according to a shared vision of equity, innovation, and inclusion. This resolution, as Bernadette mentioned earlier, is aspirational. It publicly declares that the city's commitment to be a city of compassion. This is a call to action for our city to celebrate the good works being done and to examine our policies as well as our hearts, asking the question, "Do they reflect the heart of a compassionate city?" I enthusiastically support the adoption of this resolution, and I'm so proud to be here for it. So, thank you so much.
Next, we have Lauren.
Hi, this is Lauren, and my daughter Emily was going to talk about West Sac and the compassionate city.
West Sacramento is a compassionate city, is one where everyone feels they have a place, are included, feel welcome and valued. I believe a compassionate city is one where anyone of any age is able to be safe and free. I believe that if one person shows compassion, they may show compassion to the next person and hopefully spread throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker for this item is Maria Grujava.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Maria Grujava. Welcome, Ms. Beverley. I am a civil rights activist, and I am the first donor, actually, to donate to Three Sisters Gardens that made it possible for them to get their nonprofit status. I am proud to say that. I am also helping Broadrick Love. It is a new nonprofit that is just recently formed that is feeding the homeless on Saturdays over at Broadrick Boat Ramp. And I'm glad that this resolution is going to get passed because it would codify what we do here in West Sacramento. In West Sacramento, Ms. Beverley, you can go on the Facebook page and say, "I need diapers." And 10 people will jump in there without even questioning if you really need them or not, and they'll give you diapers. And that's what West Sacramento is like. And so I'm glad you're going to be doing this, Councilmember Roscoe, because one of the goals of Broadrick Love is to get some of these unhoused folks that are at the Broadrick Boat Ramp housed and get them some hygiene. And one of the things that I was hoping to do is bring them over to the Parks and Rec Center that you're so involved in and you're more familiar with. And hopefully, you could help me get them some kind of a way so they could come in, get bathed, and do it so it's a COVID-safe way. Get them to come in, bathe them, and then, you know, get them back to their, back to the river safely. And so, you know, in the future, we could have a conversation about that because this is exactly, exactly what we need. And thank you so much, Councilmember Roscoe, for doing this because there's a new nonprofit, Broadrick Love, that's right now feeding the unhoused community. And I welcome this resolution because, again, it would be codifying what West Sacramento already does. Thank you so much.
Mayor Guerrero, that concludes our public comments.
Ms. Beverley going to speak? I see your hand raised.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Tanya Beverley, and I am proud to be the West Sacramento Ambassador for Compassionate Capital Region. I belong to a group of West Sacramentoans working to advance compassion and resilience in our community. First, I thank City Councilmember Roscoe and the West Sacramento staff for embracing our proposed resolution declaring West Sacramento a compassionate city. We believe our city already is compassionate and wanted to recognize all the individuals and organizations whose caring work makes it so. With this resolution, we also hope to encourage others to engage in acts of kindness and to partner or volunteer in activities that promote well-being, protect our environment, and assist those in need. Compassionate and resilient West Sacramento group consists of Laura Hanson, Carrie Young, Rodrick Beddingfield, Suzanne Reed, and Sarah Hedrick. And our partner organizations, you've heard of some of them this evening, include Alfred Melbourne from Three Sisters Garden, Tiffany McFadden from River City High School Unity Club, BB Can, Compassionate Capital Region, the Center for Spiritual Awareness, and we are in partnership talks with several other organizations. As the resolution notes, West Sacramento has a strong history of compassionate action initiated by government and non-government organizations alike. Still, opportunities for us to collaborate and partner in joint activities abound and will strengthen our impact, community relationships, and trust. Together, we can expand food security, access to housing, and resilience to climate change while providing pathways to upward mobility. We thank you all and look forward to connecting with the residents, businesses, and organizations of West Sacramento through our Facebook page, Sacramento Valley Region: Building Resilient and Compassionate Communities, and our website, collaborationconnection.org. You have our deepest appreciation for your action tonight, and we wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beverley. All right, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. Any council members who would like to speak? Councilmember Alcala?
Mayor, I was actually going to move to council consent agenda.
Okay, we'll finish with the comments from council members, and then we'll move to taking motions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roscoe?
I'm sorry, no, I...
Oh, sorry, you're not... All right. And Councilmember Ledesma, do you have any comment?
Just thank you for all the comments from the public. It was very gratifying to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. And also, when this resolution was presented to me, I definitely have felt, over the years of living here, that we do have a compassionate city. The city of West Sacramento administration, over the years, have really have grown in ways of reaching out and embracing, providing support for community members. Working with the Rotary Club myself has been an extraordinary experience in my years living here. Just, they constantly are providing service and volunteer their time. So you'll see them out in the food bank. And also Mercy Coalition, who established our Warming Center and providing the most compassionate and caring environment for our unsheltered guests who were challenged in being able to find housing. Sometimes the barriers could be lack of trust, you know, with the, you know, administrative, regular sources of support. And they have opened up their doors in faith-based communities so that they can provide a warm shelter for them to lay their head and a warm meal prepared by all the volunteers who came in and pulled themselves together. It was such an incredible volunteer group that established a new way for West Sacramento to do outreach and support for our unsheltered guests. And Broadrick Love, which Ms. Grujava has described, is continuing that effort together with Mercy Coalition and St. Vincent de Paul, who continue to do that work. We still have quite a few number of unsheltered people, and we would like to get them sheltered, and we would like to provide them with the supportive services here in the community. And, you know, one major partner is Yolo County. Karen Larson, here in Yolo County, who I've got to know over the years, being on the local mental health board, has grown to not only, you know, be an incredible personal, you know, witness to understanding what the barriers are as a result of substance use, but also with mental health challenges. And, you know, also in memory of James, you know, who has passed away, who was our chair of the Mental Health Board. And James Glicko Hernandez gave up a lot of his time to help youth in our community, to help them build self-esteem, you know, through being able to direct them in, you know, in the Woodland Opera House. But it was the youth of our region, youth throughout the whole region, that he provided training, gave them, you know, all the trust. Even when, you know, one youth who said, "Look at him, I was lying to him," but he still, it didn't matter. To him, he said, "I trust you, and you will learn what that means." And he learned how to be honest and forthcoming on what he believed in. So it's people like James, who was our chair and who passed away from COVID, who I want to bring to mind, who are the essence, the salt of our community, who bring us the examples of what we should be like here. And also Yolo Food Bank volunteers. We have several food bank distribution locations here in West Sacramento who rolled up their sleeves when the pandemic started and continued to provide food so that there was no lack of food. And, you know, delivering meals to homes, a lot of volunteers did that. We had a teen who came in and started to do some fundraising so that she can deliver food to people's homes. And also the volunteers who are continuously delivering that or distributing that food on a weekly basis. And, you know, I cherish and appreciate all that they do. Another major partner is the Teen Call-In Center, who continues to do outreach to our most vulnerable youth, especially during the pandemic when people are isolated at home. As you know, you know, with our recent event, tragic event, domestic violence and child abuse is, you know, is ongoing and become more challenging to identify. But what we'd like to do is be able to reach out early, to provide early prevention and intervention for families so that they have a place and someone to talk to. And that's what the Teen Call-In Center contains to provide here. And as you described, Councilmember Roscoe, in the latest windstorm, when the Rotary Club volunteer Kathy Ritter organized a major food bank distribution and also the, you know, Father Paul Baba and Jean Baba with their church, Holy Virgin Mary Antiochical Orthodox Church, who continues to provide fundraising opportunities for the Downtown Streets Team. And so they were involved in providing a hot meal for all the windstorm victims whose lights were out and didn't have any power to cook a warm meal. And it's people like that who continue to remind us on city council, who continue to remind the administration and all the staff who are working. And also, you know, the Police Officers Association, who went out the next day to provide donuts and coffee and just continuing that support. These are, you know, the people are our role models. I know us as a city, we are not perfect. I know that, you know, I've heard from community members questioning the resolution. And I understand that we have gaps in continuing to meet the needs of the community. We do need to be more vigilant. In some ways, I am open to being, you know, receiving any challenging requests, that we need to challenge ourselves to continue to be a stronger and more compassionate city. Because I think that without being in check with who we are as a community, that we can miss an area. We can have, you know, some type of implicit bias and not really seeing what we can do to further our goal to develop ourselves as a more stronger and compassionate city. So I appreciate the comments from community members who raised questions about this resolution. And I understand the concerns raised. And I'm committed to, you know, having my door open, to listening to you, and to seeing what we can do to improve our city communications, to improve our city's services, to be more responsive. I know sometimes in a tight budget, we can't do it all, but we can do what we can to at least be responsive to your concerns when they're raised and presented to us. And with that, Councilmember Alcala, I'll accept your motion to move the consent agenda.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we have public comment on all the other consent items.
Oh, should we open that up too?
Yes, please.
Sure. Okay, so then on all the... So now we'll open it up for public comment for all the other consent items. Madam Clerk, any requests for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no raised hands for public comment, but we did receive a written comment for item number four. And that's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And item number four is the quarterly financial report on the city's investment portfolio. And I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. And so we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Alcala, and I'll accept a second.
I will second.
Councilmember Ledesma seconds. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Okay, next, we will move to our time-set agenda, item number eight. And it'll be consideration of our first reading of ordinance 21-3, modifying chapter 18.20.010 of the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code to comply with new FEMA National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System requirements. And we will have Mr. Fabin present on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Greg Fabin, Flood, General Manager. Before you tonight is an item that recommends an amendment to the municipal code, chapter 18.2. And as the council is probably aware, the city has participated in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System for over a decade. It's a voluntary program that provides flood insurance discount to the communities that implement programs and measures in excess of what would be the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. The city currently is a Class VI community. And as a Class VI community, residents and business owners are offered a 10% discount on flood insurance premiums. In January of this year, the Community Rating System implemented new guidelines. One of them concerns class ratings of eight or better, which would apply to us. And that new requirement requires... And that new requirement requires that cities adopt in their municipal code, a one-foot freeboard requirement for mechanical equipment, in addition to the one-foot freeboard that already exists for the first-floor foundations for structures in a flood hazard area, a special flood hazard area. As I, as is mentioned, the current municipal code addresses the one-foot freeboard requirement for foundations. This is simply adding mechanical equipment to that requirement. It's a relatively minor amendment. And so with that, staff respectfully recommends that the council conduct a public hearing, waive the first reading and read by title and number only, ordinance 21-3, amending chapter 18.20 dash or point 010 of the municipal code related to floodplain management, and then inform the audience that the second reading and adoption of ordinance 21-3 is tentatively scheduled for the next council meeting, March 3 of this year. We are asking that the council continue the recommended action number two on advice from the city, city council, city legal council on the SEQA analysis, as it's a little bit premature to find the project exempt when, during the first reading. And so we'll bring that recommended action back for the second reading and adoption. And with that, that ends my presentation and I'll turn it back to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Fabin. Are there any questions among council members? No questions? Mr. Fabin, I just want to go over again, which you want us to follow recommended action? Number two?
One, three, and four, and we'll continue to to the next to the next.
That's okay. Thank you for clarifying. One, three, and four, but not number two. Okay. All right, so that's very helpful. And there is, I just have one quick question regarding reduction. Does it does it help improve our rates, our FEMA rates, by any chance, this action?
Well, this action would allow us to be able to be in compliance with our Class 6 rating requirements. So it will enable us to be able to work to maintain that rating and provide the discount.
Then provide the discount. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So I'll take it to a public comment and open it up for public comment at this point. Madam Clerk, are there any requests for public comment?
There are no requests for public comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. And I believe Councilmember Ledesma had to had to get off for a second. So, Madam Clerk, I just wanted you to be aware of that. And we can move forward. I'll accept a motion if there are no other questions or comments.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. Okay. All right, Councilmember Orozco, seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the rolls.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Is Councilmember Ledesma back? Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fabin. I appreciate the update and the work behind all of this to get us up to speed. So thank you. All right, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, the regular agenda item number nine, consideration of a workshop on the West Sacramento Mobility Action Plan. Ms. Strand, are you able to present at this point? Oh, you're muted. I can't hear you.
Oh, yes, just one moment. I'm just getting the screen up.
Okay, thank you. Your head's kind of cut off on the top there. There you go.
All right, can you see my screen? Yes. Thank you. So as you know, my name is Sarah Strand. I'm a senior transportation planner with our Transportation and Mobility Division. And I'm here this evening to conduct a workshop on the West Sacramento Mobility Action Plan. So, oops. This project was initiated five years ago at the direction of city council, when staff was tasked with developing a public transportation strategy in response to a range of challenges that the city was experiencing at the time. In response to council direction, staff had sought to broaden the scope of this project to consider a range of new mobility options that could be considered as part of a more diverse mobility ecosystem. And the key goals were to offer a robust, equitable mobility options for West Sacramento residents, while also exploring opportunities to encourage greater shifts from driving alone to cleaner transportation options such as walking, biking, sharing a ride on Via or Yellow Bus. The map concept was presented to city council as a three-pronged approach, looking at where we could streamline and enhance transit to increase ridership and just generally enhance the user experience, explore the seating and design of multimodal mobility hubs, and develop recommendations for how the city could best leverage new mobility and technology in order to achieve equitable transportation outcomes, as well as improve quality of life for all residents. The project was funded in 2018 through the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. And I won't read all of this, but I do want to note something important was that YCTD concurrently did receive a grant from this program to conduct their comprehensive operational analysis of the transit system, which Councilmember Ledesma provided an update on earlier. And so as such, at that point in time, staff did revise the scope of work for the Mobility Action Plan to focus primarily on the multimodal mobility hubs and emerging trends and technologies. However, we committed to working very closely and collaboratively with the Transit District on what has become known as their YoloGo effort and making sure that that is integrated into our plan concepts and that our hubs are being considered by their planning efforts as well. A city council workshop was conducted in October 2019 to discuss the goals and objectives of the map. And at that time, the council emphasized to staff that the map should build from existing local plans and goals rather than reinvent the wheel and should push the city to explore what's possible as well as what types of new mobility options residents might be interested in seeing come into the city. And since then, significant work has been completed despite some serious setbacks from the pandemic. So this evening, I'll be providing the first real update on the map since October of 2019 and will be conducting a workshop primarily on the preliminary mobility hub recommendations that are starting to emerge from this plan. And we'll discuss next steps. I do want to thank you in advance for your patience, as this is the first update on this project in some time. I'm going to move as efficiently as possible, but please do feel free to ask many more detailed questions at the end. And I will also note that Poonam Narcar with our consultant team is also here tonight and she'll be available if there are any more technical questions that may arise. So what exactly is the Mobility Action Plan? As discussed earlier, the city council provided clear direction that this should not be reinventing the wheel. And so the map should really be viewed as an implementation tool that's going to be helping us to achieve a variety of our existing goals and plans. The key policy framework for the map was actually derived from one of those plans, which is the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. And that seeks to achieve carbon neutrality for Sacramento and West Sacramento by 2045. And the mobility goals from the Climate Commission focused on three main strategies to reach these very aggressive goals. Active transportation, transit and shared mobility, so things like jump and jump bike share, Lime, scooters, Yolo Bus, Via, and zero emission vehicles, which can include electric or hydrogen fuel cell vehicles. So the map incorporates these goals directly into its objectives. And similarly, the recommendations from the map seek to align with and support those recommendations that are being set forth by the Transit District's YoloGo effort, which are primarily proposing to increase the frequencies of Route 42, our inner-city route, and reducing some of the more poor-performing low ridership bus routes in lower-density areas. Additionally, the map should be considered a living document that should be revisited periodically to ensure that hubs are still aligned with our evolving development patterns and transportation projects as they may change in the future. The map also offers the city something of a playbook as a concept of thinking about this, providing strategies that we can utilize, especially in regard to emerging technologies, and having a strategy for when to invest or how to adopt new mobility options or technologies in a way that we can make sure that they have equitable outcomes. So whether that's autonomous vehicles or connected infrastructure. And lastly, the map is just really all about growing choices for residents and making it easy to fluidly transition between modes to get people where they need to go. So as such, the map does not focus on the needs or the demand of private vehicles so much, but rather it's focused on growing those other options that are less available and making sure that the supportive infrastructure is there to connect residents between those hubs. So before we begin the workshop component of my presentation, that's going to be focused on the mobility hub recommendations. I wanted to provide a brief overview of some of the other work that has been completed to date, including the existing conditions assessment and the community outreach efforts. But first, I also just wanted to highlight some of those significant challenges that I had previously mentioned as an outcome of the COVID-19 pandemic. As you all already know, the pandemic has had unprecedented and very uncertain impacts on transportation behaviors. Rates of walking and biking are at all-time highs and telework appears to be continuing for the foreseeable future. In March 2020, our very first in-person workshop, as well as 10 mobile pop-up workshops that were planned through the summer, all had to be canceled since they would have been in person. So we had to pivot very hard and very quickly to transition onto a virtual platform, which I think all local governments are continuing to struggle with in a manner that they can reach all of their residents. Similarly, having conversations with residents about transportation behaviors and preferences is very difficult at this time, given that many people aren't traveling in the ways that they did pre-pandemic. And a lot of people don't fully understand how their behaviors or preferences are going to be changing post-pandemic. It's been a little bit of a purgatory space for conducting things like surveys. That being said, the first step in the Mobility Action Plan process was to complete the existing conditions assessment. Again, I'm not going to read over everything here, but feel free to bring up detailed questions later. But a key element of this assessment was utilizing a data visualization platform called Urban Footprint alongside a big data purchase that we made of streetlights data, which provides crowdsourced data across different modes, vehicular, bicycling, and pedestrian, which really kind of gave us one of the first glimpses at that type of travel behavior in our city. And then we also pulled in our own data set. So gourdings and alightings from Yolo Bus at their, at key stops, our Via origin and destination data, as well as micro-mobility. At the time, we only had jumps, so jump bikes and scooters, and where those activity centers are. And you can see in the map that's in the report, as well as here on the slide, just what our transit coverage and our, you know, bike network coverage looks like, layered with the hotspots of where we see Via ridership, which you can see are concentrated at like commercial areas and multifamily residential areas. And then the area in the blue dash line where our micro-mobility ridership was most concentrated along the riverfront areas. The consultant team also reviewed relevant plans and identified a baseline of opportunities and constraints upon which we've been building our map recommendations. So again, I won't read all of this. It is in your report, but the city does have a number of really awesome strengths and assets on our side in our effort to provide a more equitable and sustainable transportation system. One of the biggest ones is the fact that our city leadership at all levels has really shown extraordinary support for testing and adopting innovative solutions to better serve our residents, which have resulted in programs like Jump Bikes and Via. We also have really strong transit corridors along locations like Sacramento Avenue, West Capitol Avenue, and Jefferson Boulevard that can continue to serve as a spine for regional and local connections. And importantly, we also have a large number of residents who live within a five-mile commute of their job, yet most people continue to drive. And this really presents a significant opportunity because if we can identify those barriers that are keeping people from choosing sustainable or alternative modes to make those trips, we may be able to help them shift to things like transit or e-bikes or e-scooters or even regular bikes to make those trips instead. The key challenges that are listed here should be not too surprising. I think they would be fairly known by the council already. However, a lower density, more spread-out development pattern is one thing that makes it more challenging for some folks to choose active transportation or shared modes, primarily due to the increased travel time. Additionally, we know that there's many physical barriers that are bisecting the city that limit north-south travel, whether it's our freeway underpasses or over crossings, the deep-water ship channel rail crossings. And that that's very constraining for folks getting north and south, which, as you all know, is the big impetus behind our work on the Sycamore Trail, overcrossing and extension. Additionally, the city has a concentration of gaps in the bike and pedestrian network in some of its social equity areas in north, where these are the residents who are most often depending on walking, biking, and using transit more than other areas of our city. And so the city has been and continues to actively work to address these challenges. But it also presents an opportunity to ensure that our transportation investments are prioritized in an equitable fashion. So that being said, there's also been multiple community outreach events held, including a kickoff event in July 2020, mobility hub focus groups that included participation from the River City High School Green Tech students, which was very exciting, as well as members of the public. At those events, we basically conducted a real-time design charrette of a mobility hub, where both students and then members of the public interacted with staff to dictate which features are most important at a mobility hub, which really helped us understand some of the residents' priorities of what would make them want to use a hub. A survey was also developed that was deployed between August and October and received just over 300 responses. And that was really focused on soliciting feedback on residents' existing transportation choices, but also what the barriers are to them choosing sustainable options more frequently. And there was key themes that emerged across all of these efforts. The biggest one, which could have been influenced by the pandemic to some extent, given higher rates of walking and biking, was there was widespread demand for safety enhancements to support increased bicycling and walking. And I think the key nuance to that is that people were asking for infrastructure that they would feel safe taking their kids, the type of infrastructure that can support all ages and abilities. So other things that we heard was also a significant demand for increased access and availability of bike share and scooter share. Right now, our availability of micro-mobility is very concentrated in the northern areas in the riverfront. And we continue to get demand from other parts of the city, including in the southern parts, for folks who would like to have that option available to them. And then lastly, we did receive some general feedback on the reliability and frequency of Yolo Bus, Via, and some general comments on transportation safety just across all modes. So now we have arrived at the workshop portion of my presentation. And again, I do thank you for bearing with me on this. So this is presenting the draft mobility hub recommendations that will be included in the Mobility Action Plan. And this process has been occurring over the course of really the past year with intermittent review and coordination across departments, as well as with Yolo County Transportation District. So just to provide an overview of the process that we went through to arrive at these recommendations, we walked through a variety of scales of analysis before recommending specific site locations. We did also conduct key studies and best practices to help inform some of the metrics that we built into our suitability analysis. There's more detail on this in your reports in Attachment 1. But generally, we narrowed from the citywide scale to the neighborhood scale, and then finally to the site level. At the citywide scale, there were multiple composite metrics that were used and assessed that included data on land use, transportation demand across various modes, the data sets that I previously spoke about, and a number of social equity. Um, and a number of social equity and environmental justice considerations. From there, we also looked within the neighborhood zones to identify what are the key destinations and connections that are most important for those types of short neighborhood trips. And then lastly, we began to drill down at the site location level to consider a variety of variables. Such as property ownership, existing mobility assets, uh supportive infrastructure like bike lanes, um, which I'll discuss more in a moment. So at the site level, um, there was also key design or programming considerations that were developed. The overarching components of any mobility hub were broken into three categories. For transportation, activating and supporting land uses and cultural context. And at a more detailed level, there was five categories of amenities that were proposed for consideration at each hub location. And the site recommendations also really heavily considered where we already have naturally occurring hubs. Um, and mobility options that are on the ground today, so where places where we can create a more robust hub with fewer additions. Um, for instance, at the community center where it's already heavily programmed. In addition, we developed a typology system in order to categorize the mobility hub recommendations. So the typology system serves multiple functions by establishing. A hierarchy of scale for the hubs, with the primary hubs uh being the largest and most robustly programmed. Um, providing regional connections and acting as destinations in and of themselves. Um. So as I mentioned, the community center is the most obvious existing example of that with a a number of amenities and resources located there. And then at the the small end of the scale, we're proposing micro mobility hubs, which have the lightest touch. They can be as simple as introducing bike share and scooter share alongside, you know, maybe closing sidewalk or bike lane gaps in a neighborhood. And this is really about making it easier for residents to start their journey from home on a sustainable mode. Um, and they're much more focused on closing the first last mile gap to transit. Um, so secondary or sorry, micro mobility hubs are really neighborhood focused on helping people get to the larger hub or to the transit stop that may not be located near them. And of course, secondary and tertiary hubs just exist on that spectrum between these two bookends. Uh, alongside these typologies, we also broke the recommendations out um into near-term and long-term recommendations. The long-term recommendations were really identified as such, um, if they're contingent on future development occurring. Um, if they require additional community engagement to make sure that we find the right location. Uh, for a hub and make sure that it's the right programming. Um, or if there is more complicated uh coordination that needs to occur with an external stakeholder, what's a private property owner or otherwise, uh, in order to implement it. Further, uh, mobility hubs can grow as needed over time. So for instance, we could transition a secondary hub up into a primary hub in the future, um, if regional transit connections are made. And lastly, uh, once operating at the site scale, uh, the project team worked to balance coverage with equity. By ensuring that those who rely most on active and shared modes are served by mobility hubs. Um, but also trying to s- to encourage mode shift by testing mobility hubs in some of our lower density and auto-oriented uh parts of the city. So lastly, there's an amenity matrix that was developed that kind of pulls all of these concepts together and provides design guidelines. Um, illustrating what are the key amenities and components of the mobility hubs by each of these typologies that we've laid out. Um, again, these are just guidelines, so each hub is going to be different and will present different constraints that must be considered when we actually design and implement them. Um, but the matrix offers a baseline, uh, you know, identifying what are what are the key ingredients that we need to make a hub successful. So whether it's pedestrian connections, having bike and scooter share, uh, car share, EV chargers, bus connections, wayfinding, real-time information. Um, with all of this, we were able to identify forty-four proposed mobility hub locations across these four typologies. And so without further ado, I will transition to discuss the draft proposed mobility hub locations for your consideration this evening. Um, and again, I I'm gonna not read every single one, uh, but I will talk about a few key locations as I go through these. So again, the primary hubs are intended to serve as regional connection points that offer that full range of transportation options and supportive technologies to make trips seamlessly. Uh, the Community Transit Center is again the best example of an existing primary hub. However, simple additions of things like EV charging, uh, wifi or smartphone charging kiosks can just help to further enhance the user experience at that location. Um, the location already has many of the other recommended features such as regional and local transit connections. Uh, micro mobility offerings, curb space that accommodates ride share. Um, and it's adjacent to a rich combination of community resources and destinations. So Joey Lopes Park is a very uh similarly programmed primary site that's proposed. Uh, it also includes car share, it's future planned EV charging. And importantly, this is going to serve as a really critical central hub in our transportation network as the Sycamore Trail over crossing builds out. Um, and it also serves a lot of really important users with many seniors and affordable housing developments at that location. Um, some of the long-term recommendations that are set forth um for consideration as primary hubs would also include. Uh, Sutter Health Park as well as the Southport Town Center Plaza area. Um, but these are very highly dependent on the outcome of planned streetcar, light rail, or any other high-capacity transit that might connect to these areas in the future. So secondary hubs can be differentiated as having only locally serving transit connections. Um, but they're still focused at destinations or higher demand locations where many residents have shown dependence on shared and active transportation modes for their regular trips. And by leveraging the that strong spine of our existing transit, um. Excuse me. Uh, alongside the micro mobility offerings, um, and our supportive bike and pedestrian infrastructure at many of these locations, we can create more accessible hubs. However, you might notice that some of these locations actually just offer opportunities to address deficiencies at those locations. Um, essentially using a mobility hub as an activating um tool in those locations. So just as an example, and I'll discuss this a little bit further, um, the location at Jefferson and Sacramento Avenue, the Artegas Shopping Center. That area, uh, we know it currently lacks sufficient sidewalks. It has some bike lane challenges um there. And there's a severely underutilized space at the corner that gets cut through a lot by cars. So that is one concept that we could consider. Hey, that's a spot. Maybe we could put a hub, get consistent sidewalks in. Um, activate the space. Um, secondary hubs are focused along high-demand corridors in the north part of the city. Um, but we are also proposing some key locations in the south at locations such as the Savannah Apartments. Um, where there there is significant transit via and bicycle use observed. Um, and long-term, an important location that we'd like to explore would be the River Point Plaza. We have a lot of demand on transit on via and otherwise for the shopping center there. However, it presents a very constrained and complicated site uh to try to get a mobility hub im- implemented at. Um, some additional community outreach is also needed to understand the best location for a secondary hub in the Hobson and Bright area, mostly just due to. Constraints of the right of way and wanting to better understand the community needs in that area. And then lastly, uh, long-term development expected in the Pioneer Bluff area and at the future Native American Heritage Center. Are likely going to offer us some really excellent opportunities to continue to build out a highly connected uh mobility hub network. So as you can see, um, the lo- location recommendations grow in number as we move down in scale. Um, and again, I won't read every location, but the tertiary re- recommendations really begin to transition. Into less active land uses and focus more on active transportation connections between neighborhoods and nearby services or amenities. Um, in alignment with the suitability analysis, these hubs are also co- like look co-located near multifamily residential areas. Um, where rates of walking, biking and using transit are higher than in other parts of the city. Parks, recreation centers, trail connections and school connections are also heavily captured in this typology. And then lastly, our micro mobility hub recommendations um have, again, the lightest touch, the smallest scale hubs. Um, they can be as simple as having a bike share corral in a street parking spot. Um, and ensuring that there are safe bike connections to that hub. Um, the locations shown in bold on this list are actually already existing micro mobility hubs where we have bike share and scooter share offerings in the throughout the city. So you can see, we already have like a a pretty robust foundation of micro mobility that we're building off of. Um, but some of the new locations that we're recommending um are in areas of the city where bike share and scooter share hubs do not currently exist. However, those are some of the areas that we've been receiving numerous comments and requests uh to see increased availability. So places like Stonegate and Village Parkway, Summerfield or Pottene Park area and Eagle Point Park area. And I'll also just note, um, these micro mobility hubs would introduce those uh bike share and scooter share offerings. But all of the scales above this, um, such as a secondary hub at Southport Town Center Plaza, for instance. Would also include the introduction of bike share and scooter share uh as a potential feature of a hub. So, uh, finally, we arrive at our full draft mobility hub recommendations. Um, this is included on pages forty-eight through fifty of your attachment one for reference, um, if it's more legible that way. And in review, this represents a total of forty-four proposed mobility hub locations, thirty-one of which were proposing for the near term. Um, which were lu- loosely defining as a five-year timeframe versus uh longer than that. These locations, again, were identified through the site suitability analysis, but with additional consideration also given to those transit connections, supportive bike and pedestrian infrastructure. And whether the hub acts as an origin or destination, as well as whether the recommendations adequately balance equity and coverage. The specific amenity recommendations for each of these locations is included on page forty-nine of your report. And then lastly, um, there were three just illustrative concepts that were developed solely as examples. Uh, to show how the mobility hub concept can be applied to activate a space. Um, and make it easier for folks to choose sustainable modes. So again, these are only examples to show what is possible. Um, but this particular example uh imagines what the location that I talked about before, the Artegas Jefferson and Sac Avenue could look like with a secondary mobility hub implemented. Um, so this could include dedicated local transit connections. A supportive class four bike lanes, contiguous sidewalks, micro mobility offerings, car share and EV charging stations. And excess parking uh that is currently underutilized could potentially be used for a park and ride from that location as well. Uh, a granted, again, this is only an example and additional coordination would obviously be required with a private property owner if there was interest in exploring actual designs or implementation. Oh, whoops. So in terms of next steps, the remaining work um on the mobility action plan plan that needs to be completed. Uh, there is another chapter that is focused on smart mobility and technology recommendations that is forthcoming. Um, as well as a map implementation strategy that will cover both the mobility hub recommendations, as well as smart mobility and technology recommendations. Um, and then there will be some additional overarching recommendations around supportive planning or policy actions that we may need to take. You know, for instance, ways that we can integrate the information from the map into our Bike Ped Trails Master Plan update in a couple of years. Um, and then lastly, we do have a final round of community outreach that we will be conducting in March. Um, integrating any uh comments or feedback that we get from the city council tonight, of course, before we. Begin to share some of our uh recommendations for additional community feedback. Uh, we anticipate completing a draft of the mobit- full mobility action plan by March or April. And we would be returning to the TMI Commission and City Council for for further feedback uh at that time. And anticipate uh May or June of this year presenting a final map for TMI Commission consideration and City Council consideration of adoption. So with that, I will uh end my presentation and thank you so much for your patience. Uh, and respectfully request that the City Council submit any clarifying questions. And provide any feedback or direction on the preliminary recommendations presented this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rann, for the comprehensive presentation. It was very good. Um, and I, let me see if I can. See council members at this point. Um, are there any questions among the council members? Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you. I want to thank you for all this um work. It's incredible. You've done a fantastic job. I did have some um comments and then I had some questions. Um, you mentioned a final round of um feedback from the uh city, uh, and from the community. So, um, when you do this, does this go out in Spanish, the requests? Do they go out in Spanish or Russian as well as English?
We have not uh done the best job of translation on this. We've done very limited translation because our budget is a little bit constrained on on this project. But um. On the virtual workshops where we're interacting verbally, we have not had staff on those calls who can accommodate. Um, but for surveys and flyers, we do uh some some translation of the information.
Yes, I I think that's really important because a lot of members of those communities, especially the older members. Um, are individuals who don't have cars and and, you know, it would be really important to get feedback as to what area. You know, uh, transportation would would be needed in. Um, and I guess being a senior myself, you know, I'll be sixty in in a month. Um, I'm also concerned with, um, if we've gotten feedback from our senior community. We have a lot of folks out there.
Yeah, and I should have mentioned that one of the um really important plans that we're building off of here is also our age-friendly action plan. Um, we have really strong ties with, uh, you know, BB Can and uh Charlotte Dorsey and AARP who. Have all helped to make sure that we're getting some input from our seniors. I will note that this year has been particularly challenging to reach seniors, um, because we had to quickly shift onto so many virtual platforms for our outreach. Um, so we are still struggling with finding the most effective and creative solutions to reaching folks during this time. Uh, very open to suggestions, but it's something that we're cognizant of, um, and are doing our best right now.
No, I think that's great. Um, and, you know, I noticed that on Sacramento Avenue, we have a huge. The population density there is is really large. I think it's probably amongst the largest in the city on the north side. So, um, I I wasn't sure exactly why it wasn't considered a site for a primary. Could you go into a little more explanation there?
Are you, you're talking about the Sacramento Sacramento Avenue, the population density, right? It's not proposed as a primary? Yeah, so the the differentiation between a primary and a secondary is really about the transit connectivity. And having a regional connection is what makes it a primary hub, as well as some of those activating land uses that make it, you know, very dense in different resources or shops. Uh, the Route forty-two does not run uh in the area that you're describing. It's served by Route forty-one, forty and forty-one local routes. And so that's really what uh would designate it as a secondary, more locally serving hub, as opposed to the community center or. Um, Joey Lopes Park or even uh the Enterprise uh North Park and Ride, which we've actually identified as a secondary. But has the potential to become a primary because it has that regional con- connection. So that's the criteria that we were using there.
Okay, um, let's see, and um, have we got, it was wonderful. You got feedback from, I believe you called it the River City Green Tech students?
Yeah, we did.
That's, that's great, but um, have we had conversations with the school district? Because I know a lot of our kids, um, probably the majority are on buses, but I know that one of the problems when I was on the school board, we had especially, I think it was Stonegate. No, 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 not Stonegate, uh, Southport. There's a lot of traffic there, and it was because we had a lot of parents. Um, you know, driving their cars, dropping kids off, you know, and sometimes it was just that, just, you know, drop off, pick up and stuff like that. So I'm hoping, I mean, that there's a lot of congestion there, and I think it's wonderful what we're doing because we're trying to address congestion problems, pollution problems, I mean, everything. So I'm wondering if we're having these conversations with them also.
Haven't had significant uh outreach or connections with the school district. Um, but that is something that we can certainly uh make some, reach out and make some contacts and make sure that they're more looped into this. Um. Aside from our, again, we we did work closely with the Green Tech students and uh their teacher and some folks that were involved through that outreach uh component with the school. I did just want to quickly clarify. I did just want to quickly clarify, did you say Stonegate or Southport Elementary?
I said Southport. I said Stonegate. I said, no, I meant Southport.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know we've tried to mitigate some of the traffic, you know, concerns that we have there, you know, painting lines and et cetera. But there's still a lot of, so I see it in a lot of the schools, you know, there's the possibility that, you know, we could maybe designate, you know, some of these hubs a little differently. I don't know. That's why I'm just asking if you have these conversations. They're the authorities on it, so.
Yeah, and I think that there's a combination of conversations we can have now about these high level location recommendations versus as we move into the implementation phase, the, if we were actually going to be citing a hub that's going to be serving, you know, the Southport Elementary area, then we would want to reach out to the surrounding community members and the school at that time to get that more fine grain input on how we should actually design it.
And I noticed we have a lot of development projects that I've seen where some of the developments are going in, but I didn't see them addressed in the hub. I know there's a project called Garber that's up, but I didn't see one of the primary hubs there. And that's going to be huge because my understanding is they're going to be over a thousand hubs. Have you, I know you said you would probably redesignate some of them, but that wasn't in there, Emma, you know?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question and a good observation. I think the biggest reason that we didn't venture so far to include those in the long term is just there's so much uncertainty around the actual development of those. And given that this is a living document, I think those are very much the types of developments we had in mind that as the city grows and develops and evolves and changes, you know, those are the locations that we can start to take a closer look at as they become closer to actually being developed.
And how many, each of the mobility hubs about, I'm sorry. My daughter's calling me. I'm going to turn this off. Okay, sorry. Let's see, what was the question I was going to ask? I apologize just a second. Oh, yes. How many people are going to be moved in each mobility hub? I mean, how many do you think actually people pass through mobility hubs? I'm just sort of curious, like the primary. Yeah, I did, maybe I missed it when you had it on there.
No, that's not something that we've attempted to quantify. It's, the whole concept of mobility hubs is still fairly nascent in the transportation industry. There's a handful of large cities who are starting to pilot them. But I, I would have to look into that or we would be learning it through this process, really. You know, by typology, I don't know that there's anything out there that says, you know, kind of the population passed through users by scale of hub.
Well, no, I want to thank you so much. It's a great report and I love that you had the equity piece in there. Really important. As I said, I can see certain populations that will tremendously be affected by this. So that's the end of my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, and I just apologize for the quick change in venue, Mayor. So appreciate you and City Clerk getting you back on board. But, but also just on Sarah, as usual, well done. And thank you for the comprehensive job in getting this. I can't believe it's been since two thousand nineteen that we've seen this. And at the risk of aging myself on council, but, but you know, this started for me conceptually with the, with the graphic of the San Diego hub that you had and began to, you know, I think everybody's seen it, but about what this could be to the community. And I will take a moment to thank my colleague, Councilmember Alcala. I mean, the questions you had were very, I appreciate them because these very much are, the concept of this is having the eyes of how it could help a community get around is what was intended. And I will share my experience with sort of, kind of through transit, the journey I've taken and understanding why this is so important. It's the minute we launched VIA and the minute we launched Jump Bikes, which was within the same week back in May, somebody's got to help me out, two thousand, I think that was nineteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. And being on the YCTD bus at the, at a time when we're seeing ridership drop continually. What we started to notice is who was starting to use these new modes? And when you drive through or travel in Bright or Broderick, you saw the red bikes hanging out and when you could see the maps and when you use them, you'd see bikes parked on Kerry or wherever around areas that, I don't want to emphasize this as part of my comments, areas of use, people where people were going, right? At the time, Broderick was open, there were bikes there. At the moment, again, you can, you can, you could see people in neighborhoods. And then Southport wasn't there yet, but there was all of a sudden demand we needed in Southport and particularly at the Southport Town Center. But you started to see visually where people were going. And VIA the same way, right? Kind of my wake up call is, I was coming back from somewhere in the northern part of the city coming home and I, we detoured or picked up two people in the central part of our city. And one elderly woman, you brought up seniors, which is our favorite story about seniors who are a big fan of VIA. Help them get around. And she was on her way to getting their haircut at Supercuts in Southport Town Center by herself. She had a walker, so she needed assistance. And the concept of that did two things. One is that this, this is working, right? This is, this is helping people actually move around in our city. And two is that if you think about it the right way, which was again, we started this in twenty eighteen in the Mobility Action Plan thereafter, you know, around the same time. It was all just a concept and a picture you're looking at on the screen right now. But you now you start to think about it in terms of, okay, if people start and begin their journey and walk out their door, and I remember Sarah explained this to me, like that you want, they want to know how they're going to start or end their journey and get home, right? And I occasionally, now that I've had to work downtown, I would take the thirty nine, thirty five bus up to downtown. And I had to figure out how to make the last mile home and hopefully there was a jump bike around or something. So again, I started to think in that way as well. But I'm going to leave you with two things and, but Councilmember Alcala, I want to address one thing that I think that caught my eye in terms of how we address this mobility pan, so I understand some. All, hey, the plan looks great. The hub plan is thoughtful. I want to think about the language we're using in the plan because it's starting to create. This is all about, to me, equity, about ensuring every person in the city has an opportunity to get around and move. And the language of using a primary hub versus a secondary hub versus tertiary brings to mind is, oh, so the site at Sacramento Avenue is secondary compared to another place. So I'm going to ask you to get creative, not create that, that, that language gap as we think about these things. Sacramento Avenue one, actually, I saw that. I was like, I was really excited about like that corner, which oftentimes, you know, I've seen people selling stuff there or doing something on that corner. But it's such, so rich and it's, and across the street could be a higher density project, which is come and gone, you know? But I just really want to get away from that kind of reference because the best part about the hub is that things can change. And you said this is a living document and there's nothing to say that the owners of the shopping center at Sacramento and Cagle, Ortega's, what, that could be something else, right? If they invested and if, and it could become what we term a primary. It's a living document and that, that opportunity is available. But more so, I want the community to feel like it's, it's an amenity, it's, it's an asset, it's a place to go and start their journey that they can recognize. So I'd ask us to think about the language in it to promote the social equity component of it. The other part too is, is the ensuring that we do, you know, the regional connection. Is that it's not super clear in the plan as you have it right now. And I think that's, that's an opportunity to allow people to better understand sort of how we might be thinking about light rail, streetcar in, in West Sacramento, in Yolo County, in Southport, how we might think about the change. And then, and it's been, I appreciate you working closely with YCTD as they finalize the COA, which kind of looks at streamlining, you know, routes. Why? Because somebody can take a jump bike or a scooter or a VIA to get to the transit center much more efficiently, which is kind of what I did. And sometimes I was, when I had to move downtown, I'd take a VIA to the community center and then hop on a bus, get across the river really fast and it was really convenient. But, but, but I think we need to kind of highlight that because I think with the Mobility Action Plan, you started to address it with, with, with the, with the bike, pedestrian, bike pit master plan intersects with sort of, we need to highlight kind of the infrastructure needs that this would vote. We need more regional, period. And I think where, that's kind of the challenge. We have a YCTD. How do we connect more? How do we make it more frequent going across the river, getting to and from, because that's now the hub, the hub of employment. And so again, just an area to think about. The other area that you brought up and that's, that, that, that point, you brought up River Point Plaza. But I know there's also an employment center on the other side of the freeway that often we miss. And I've heard from employers, namely the state and other employers who are looking for better connections, regional connections. So your, your, your hub designations want to look good. And we want to, again, emphasize the language thing as a bridge to promote equity. But it also needs to address kind of an aspiration, we should have more transit opportunities in those parts of town. And, and that they can change from a, I'm going to term it now, secondary to a primary if we did something different. And I think that's where I kind of want to make sure we leave some room for, I know you said these are guidelines, but it feels very much like we're landing on these, this is where we're going to do it versus we did something different in Sacramento Avenue. We had a land use choice about the land across the street. You know, again, at Sacramento Avenue, there was a high density apartment. We might choose differently and make, think differently about it, knowing that we could get the ridership necessary to do more across the street at, at, at the corner of Jefferson and Sacramento. So again, it's just, it's just how we think about it, I think I wanted to bring up. And I think the only other thing I wanted to bring up and I apologize for going on, but this is, this is really exciting to me because it's the culmination of a lot of work and thoughtful work you've brought and the council has brought and thought about and bringing all these elements together. But it has to do with, again, the, and I think we started bringing it up is this is promoting becoming the city, becoming a better steward of the climate, right? It's emphasizing, promoting, right, without, you know, sort of banging somebody over the head to do something different or do something less or change their lifestyle. This can actually enhance people's life. And again, when we think about, this is where it crosses over into land use decisions and development agreements that may come up in certain areas or, or whatever, where the addition of a, of a mobility hub, thought, thinking about, you know, before, I mean, think about it in most of our city, especially where it's been developed over the last thirty years, twenty, twenty years, I would say. You know, we did very easily curb cutouts and, you know, pull up for the, for the bus system. And that hasn't worked out super well. And if we were to design neighborhoods with these mobility hubs, have developers think about them differently. So it encourages, it makes it super easy for those, for, for people, whether in Southport, Bright, Broderick, central part of the city, whatever, right? Things can be very, very attractive and change, you know, and, and, and change people's ability to make choices or that does not have to include a car, for cost reasons or whatever. So again, I think this, I think that's an important component. The last thing I wanted to bring up is what's next? And again, going away from this is maybe not a blueprint, but certainly a goalpost of where we want to go. The one thing this lacks is funding. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that's, that's next. And I know the new administration in Washington and a friend of West SAC who's visited us now running the Transportation Department of Transportation and who has already commented in his first two weeks in office about these types of concepts. We got to be ready. Should those, those types of grants and infrastructure grants, we got to be ready. So it's, you know, I think the plan, the thoughtfulness of it is really good, but we've, we've got to start maybe thinking about what implementation would look like. So if we, we had an opportunity to apply early and often for the, for any type of grant money that might be available, should Secretary Buttigieg go that route, which he's signaling we need to including rail? We need to be ready. So, so this is a really, really, I'm super impressed. I went through the report and there's lots of things to be determined, I'm sure, but it just couldn't be more excited. And Sarah's always great work and appreciate your coming to us with, providing some feedback. So thank you.
Thank you. And if I can, there's a couple of things you mentioned. I just thought I'd respond to you really quickly. On the typology naming, excellent comment. And I think, you know, can't see the forest for the wood sometimes working on these projects. But I am, since we are workshopping this, our alternative naming typologies were basically just the scale, regional, local, neighborhood and micro. Would that be more amenable to, to what you were saying?
I think that's the right direction, yes.
Okay. And then, and then to your point on the funding, I'm glad that you brought that up. That's something I should have mentioned early on is a part of the impetus behind doing this plan from the start was really to try to get us very well poised to go after, you know, grants and other external sources of funding for implementation. So we'll be working on an implementation strategy that we'll be bringing back to council at a later date.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The comments already provided were extensive and I agree with a lot of them, especially comments made by both of my colleagues regarding the Jefferson and Sacramento site, potential site. I do agree. I think that, you know, we're in an area that has great potential with a lot of vacant land that may be ultimately developed into, you know, housing or other opportunities where people would really take place, excuse me, would take advantage of a hub. And ultimately, I mean, there's, there's a major supermarket, one of the few that we have in our, our city, as well as access to the police station. And, you know, there are apartments right there not too far away in a, in a community there that could certainly benefit from having access and agree. Maybe that would be a primary. I, I, you know, I've enjoyed listening to these conversations over the years. You know, I often reference the, the evolution of just my vision and my lens toward transportation in our city. It's never really occurred to me how many, you know, how many issues arise when you have an underutilized bus system running through town along with heavy, you know, freight traffic that is taking a toll on our roads and it's very, very expensive, as we know. We just invested seventeen million dollars to fix just a little over three point three miles of West Capital Avenue that's still under construction. But, I mean, that's not much if we're buying for that high a price tag. So what do we do? And when you couple it with our interests in, you know, reducing our carbon footprint and finding sustainable ways of getting people to and fro in our city, it only makes sense that we engage in all these fantastic ideas, many of which have already been implemented. And I'm also excited about the fact that we're making our streets safer. I know several years we've been, you know, suffering from the problem of vehicle pedestrian accidents under, you know, with some of our major corridors and trying to make at least West, West Capital Avenue that much more pedestrian, bicycle friendly, especially since it's a thoroughfare and people. trying to make at least West, West Capitol Avenue that much more pedestrian bicycle friendly, especially since it's a thoroughfare and people could use that to get around, whether that be to Riverpoint Plaza or anywhere around town. It's such a large stretch of road. You know, from my personal experience, I have actually, I am one of those people that are within five minutes of my workplace and you know, maybe I got a little enthusiastic and, you know, bought a bicycle helmet and decided to ride to work. I don't know if I went as far as biker shorts, but in any case. The one thing I did notice is that, you know, I had a lot of trepidation. There were, I didn't know how to get from the state streets to downtown Sacramento. And so it took different routes, whether that be the on ramp to the to the Tower Bridge Gateway or all the way around over by Garden. But there weren't a lot of bike friendly routes. There weren't bike lanes and there's, you know, fast traffic and oftentimes visibility is limited. And so it was a deterrent and it definitely had a cooling effect on my enthusiasm because you know, one wants to go to work, but they don't want to risk their life at the same time. But I appreciate that we're talking about this and that we're heading in this direction. I I'm, I also think that considering the conversation even further, I mean, Sycamore over or the Sycamore Trail is, you know, we're looking at the potential of having the Sycamore Trail overpass upcoming. And that's going to be one of those avenues where, say, children who want to access amenities you know, that that are just being barred from that transportation because of a major highway, you know, separating their home from, say, my home are limited in their abilities. And so I I look forward to, you know, seeing what enhanced safety enhancements we have and to supporting infrastructure projects that connect us all. You know, more than anything, when I took a ten mile walk this past Sunday with a friend and it was wonderful to see so many people taking advantage of the new paved trails, even if they're unpaved, people are out there, they're enjoying it and we want that. We want people getting air and getting exercise and enjoying the ability to connect with one another in our city. So Sarah, thank you again for such an extensive and well thought out presentation. I appreciate that. Every time you bring something for us, you're always open to hearing the feedback and implementing it. We've come a long way in the last several years and I look forward to what's yet to come.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Sarah. At this time, I want to open it up to public comment. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
Did not receive any written public comments and there's no interest for public comments at this time.
And there's no interest for public, for live public comment? Okay, thank you. I think I did see written public comment from Ms. Flint. She referenced, and I'll mention it really quick. She referenced just around the timing and and I get her point with the pandemic, you know, and the lack of using public transportation. But in looking at your presentation, it's beyond just the public transportation. It's a component of lots of other modes of transportation, which I see as being utilized, but I do get her point around that. As we look at the future of public transportation with the pandemic and hoping we can eradicate it so we can get back to normal, but if not, you know, will be under limited circumstances. So I'll close the public comment at this point and bring it back to council. And Sarah, I just want to say, I don't know if you ever get any sleep. This is quite the task. A lot of work, a lot of, you know, depth in the information you've provided. This is definitely something I think, you know, Councilmember LaDesma and I really, you know, I think there's just so many different opinions out there about how to address getting people moved from one location to another. And this is what I think, you know, we spend a lot of time discussing out in, which is why our role in CACOG and transportation, it's incredibly important for us to take a look at how we can network, not just here in West Sacramento. I mean, we're looking at how we can get people pulled together in one location and transported out of the city. And what it takes, you know, for them to, you know, make that decision that this that this hub is going to work for them so that they can use this instead of being in their cars to get to either Folsom, for example, you know, how how are we going to get them there so that we can put them in a hub and it just takes one, one mode of transportation to get them out there, you know, or to Davis, where we know there's a lot of B C Davis students. Or to Woodland, for example, there's, you know, all the public services are out there in Woodland. Or to other, you know, social service programs out here, there's Core, you know, where I understood that there is probably lack of public transportation for people who don't have transportation. Where people in Yolo County in the region come to use that particular substance abuse treatment program. And it's really out of the way. But, you know, there, there are people that I've heard of that are interested in getting out of their cars. And you've identified, you know, that there are gaps in safe routes in our bike pathways. And so I appreciate you doing that. I know this is a thought that went into trying to figure out what we can do to improve getting people into getting, you know, streets to use stocks using the cars. Councilmember Alcala's point together with Councilmember LaDesmas in looking at the future development with Yarborough and maybe considering how we can modify a development agreement so that we can create a hub. And getting that into the the plan now, I don't know if you could probably, you know, just take a peek at it and look at that as your long term planning effort. So that way we have an idea of, well, because all those people moving in, we want to be able to get them out of their cars and start incentivizing them as they're moving in or start incentivizing the developer to build something so that we can start encouraging people to use other modes of transportation instead of their cars. And also looking at the age friendly mode of transportation, you know, as we look at making senior housing more accessible for our elderly population, we're definitely a growing, my council member, I call them in that niche as well. I think the rest of my council members are younger than I am. So just making sure that we connect with you know, those areas that we're going to be increasing age, age friendly communities and that they have access to public transportation. We have, I think, was primarily established for that. And just taking a look at ways so that we can have affordable transportation, not only just affordable for them, but for the city. And and make it very, you know, convenient for those with disabilities. And so I'm looking to that as far as these mobility hubs that people with disabilities, you know, even mental health challenges. And I encourage you to try to reach out to like Mammy, for example. People who have a mental health challenge, for example, are terrified of riding in a bus. There's just just all sorts of nuances that go into somebody who has that experience. I mean, and they rely on public transportation. And if we are modifying how it's going to work in our community, I just want to make sure that we bring them along. And then Councilmember Alcala's point regarding the high school. So everybody drives in and I I've been caught in that traffic nightmare where, you know, there are people being dropped off at the high school and, you know, they they built it right there where all this other housing is being developed. So now we've got the new housing and the traffic getting out of town in the morning, students driving in and then everybody driving out. So it's just, it turned, it's turned out to be a traffic there. Parking lot in the morning. So finding ways to reduce that traffic and to get and parents, I'm sure would love to put their kids in some form of transportation that gets them out of them having to do that themselves, especially in high school. And seniors, I'm sure would would be interested. So partnering with the school in some way would be, would be, you know, a great idea. So thank you, Councilmember Alcala for bringing that up from your experience. And just taking a look at how we can move, you know, people in the central part of town is, I, Councilmember Roscoe brought brought to mind. You know, there are people around. I think it's like, you know, off of between Sacramento and West Capitol, that area is an area that I think we need to get people more incentivized. And I don't think it's it's a group of people who are you know, going to be tapping into social media or going to be giving you information. So, you know, one of the challenges I have with our communication and outreach is tapping people who don't normally use those channels and who rely on public transportation. And if there's anything I could do to help you reaching out to the faith based community that I'm establishing a greater connection with, I'd be more than happy to work with you on that. And to bring in ways of connecting with them and connecting with their, you know, congregation so that they can participate. So just let me know what I can do to help you with that. And, you know, the Yolo County Children's Alliance is also, you know, connected with the, you know, vulnerable populations who rely on public transportation. And if you need, you know, resources for translation, you know, I'll tell you, the Sikh community is ready to step up and help you out. The Muslim community is ready to, you know, step up and help you out. And, you know, we have LULAC. They're well connected in the community. They're ready to help you with Spanish speaking. So don't hesitate to reach out to all of us who are connected with those communities, you know, to be able to translate information so that we are inclusive and and that compassionate city that we're talking about, that we just passed that resolution to make sure that we connect with everybody in all the, in all the corners of our culturally diverse community, make sure that they're participating here in this plan. And, you know, just looking at, you know, and the Councilmember LaDesma has been working long and hard in this area is our, is our light rail. And one of the, one of the interests that our community sees in the Southport area is a light rail going all the way, you know, back into the Southport area. If there's a way to put that in the books, I mean, I I've chatted and I've heard it's eligible for a new start. I want to start thinking about that now. I want to start thinking about how we can, you know, expand a light rail here in the city. I think it's possible. I think we should need to be ambitious. I think we need to take advantage while, while, you know, it's Councilmember LaDesma, we have a friend in the administration, the Biden administration. And I think we need to just, you know, put some plans down in writing so that we can take advantage of that opportunity that comes around to us sometime in the next four years to start planning that. And also whatever we can do to help you with CACOG, you know, for additional funding for planning, I know, you know, you don't have a whole lot of money to do this. Let us know what we can do to help. And and I hope you get some rest after all of this, you know, put this away.
Thank you.
You done a great job. We all appreciate all the work you do. So thank you very much. Any other comments or questions among the councilmembers? Okay. And I, do we need to take any action on this?
Nope.
Okay. Well, I think then can transition on. So let's see. Okay. So did, so do we need to accept the report or anything at all? Do we need to? Is there anything else that we need to do on this, Aaron?
No, Mayor Guerrero, this is a workshop only. So it was just to get council direction and bring it back once we have a final plan. And that's a date in the future. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I will move next to council calendar. Is there an update?
Good evening. No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we'll move to a city manager report?
No reports tonight from me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you did, are you are sending scheduling appointments for our strategic planning retreat at this point?
That's correct. We're scheduling the session itself and then some of the pre-interviews with our facilitator, which the council members, so you should all be getting emails about that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And a city attorney report?
Nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Any staff direction from city council members? No? Okay. Any future agenda item requests by council? Okay. Just want to add that the past few days have been particularly hard on the heart. I would like to close tonight's meeting in memory of those who were lost to us and to the families grieving unimaginable losses and despair. You know, we've had a young, you know, baby, an infant, Amanda Marie Owens, who was tragically killed this last week and along with Ms. Colleen Fish. And the young couple in the car accident earlier this week, Rasul Pele Zili and Anita Zili. And to all those, our hearts and prayers go with you. I know everybody will be joining me and employing friends, families and neighbors at the request of the family, the Zili family, to please do not drink and drive. The consequences is devastating and lives ruined. And these two young children will grow up without parents. So my heartfelt condolences to all the loved ones grieving. I would like to close tonight's meeting in memory of those who have tragically died in our community. So I'll accept a motion to adjourn in their memory.
I'm moved. Second.
Councilmember Roscoe moved and Councilmember Alcala seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember LaDesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.